Alrighty. Good afternoon, Commissioners, and over to you Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Mas, and welcome everyone to the Tuesday, March 18th, Washington County Board of Commissioners Work Session. We have a very full day with our evening, with our work session this afternoon, our board meeting this evening, followed by our first Budget Committee meeting for this budget season after that. So hence, one of the reasons why we started work session at 1:00. This is Chair Catherine Harrington. I'm joined by Commissioners Jason Snyder, Nafisa Phi, and Jerry Willey. Commissioner Pam Treese is on vacation until Wednesday of March. So first item on the agenda, we have Jill Chen from our housing group. Congratulations, by the way, on the closing of at least one property for the transitional housing. That's very exciting, so take it away.
Thank you Chair Harrington, and good afternoon Commissioners. My name is Jill Chen. I use she in her pronouns, and I'm sorry, there goes one of my pronouns there.
I guess what you are. Not well done.
Otherwise, I'm late. And I'm sorry for that disturbance. I'm Assistant Director of the Housing Services, of Department Housing Services. And I'm sorry for, I'm also the replacement today for Biennath Valdez, our Community Engagement Coordinator who's out sick, as well as Molly Rogers, who is also on a well-deserved vacation. As you know, the Housing Advisory Committee is a committee that the Board appoints to oversee many of the housing work the Housing Authority implements. Fifteen members sit on the committee, or them at large, and the rest from various disciplines such as real estate, development, construction, architecture, banking, and finance, social services, and elderly representation. We have five vacancies on our fifteen-member Board, two members at large positions, one position representing veterans, one involved in urban or regional planning, and one involved in finance. We have provided a packet, full information for the process. We have received nine applications for the five positions opened, and five applicants were interviewed. The matrix is in your packets. We recommend appointing the following five members onto our committee. Chris Aosa identifies as a veteran and has extensive experience as a housing leader with experience in public administration, nonprofit management, specializing in affordable housing and homeless initiatives. Second one is Paul Cummings, holds a Masters in City Planning from the University of California, Berkeley, and a Bachelor of Science in Urban Architectural Design from University of California, Davis. Paul also has extensive experience in capital investments in affordable housing and is working for the National Affordable Housing Trust. Third is Len Kim Lee White, who works as a loan officer at MAPS Credit Union and has experience interacting with small business owners, some immigrant, and low-income business owners, and is a current volunteer at Micro Enterprise Services of Oregon's Loan Committee. Fourth is Chrishell Lucas, who works as a Supportive Services and Behavioral Health Program Director at the Forest Grove Foundation. Chrishell has lived experience with housing instability and foster care as well. The last is Deborah Walton, a third-generation Oregonian currently living in Hillsborough. Deborah works with adults with behavioral disabilities and has worked within the Beaverton School District in special education. We are excited for the perspectives and expertise incoming members will provide to hold us accountable and move the housing authorities' work forward, and they represent a wide swath of our community. Before I open up for questions and comments, I want to take the opportunity to thank Biennath for her work in leading the Housing Advisory Committee and supporting this recruitment process. We simply couldn't do this work without our dedicated, mission-driven staff and our supportive Board themselves. And with that, I thank your time and any questions.
Commission members, do you have any questions? Or are you all set to follow through on the appointment?
It's a good group, Mike. I just have a question is that there isn't a requirement they live in Washington County, obviously, because I see two of them, I think, did not live in Washington County.
That's correct.
Yeah, it's a good, impressive.
No, thank you.
Robust backgrounds.
Yep. So much, and we're really appreciative of their volunteer services and your support of them.
But we've had great projects over these last five-plus years and know that we'll have great expertise to help us with the ones ahead.
Thank you. I know you have a full agenda, so I will, without further ado, I want to thank you all so much for the time.
Do you recall by any chance when these will be coming to us for action?
I think it's in, I want to say, is it two weeks' time?
Oh, that's the usual method. You're right. Yep, thank you. Perfect. Alrighty.
So much.
Thanks, Jill. Next, we'll move on with our land use and transportation team on the planning work program. There's plenty of chairs and plenty of microphones. Great. One of the few times a year that I think biennially, right?
Indeed. Well, good afternoon Chair, and thank you Commissioners for having us here today. We want to just sort of give you an update on the status of our current biennial work program, which was kind of aligned with our fiscal years, but 2023 through 2025, and then give you a preview of what we think is coming for the 2025-2027 biennial planning work program. So Erin Wardell is our Assistant Director. She's going to do the bulk, well, some of the presentation, kick it off. And then Carol Johnson is our still-new-ish Planning and Development Services Manager. We're super excited to have her on the team. And then I just want to do maybe just a quick shout-out. We have Theresa Terniak's in the room here, and Diommi are Principal Planners for Transportation, or Community and Transportation Planning. And then Stephen Shane's our Principal Planner for the current planning section as well. So between those three sections, the work program tries to cover the bulk of the work that those groups are going to do. So real shout-out to all of those section leads there as well. And their teams just do a lot of work, really good work, so we appreciate all of them.
We are in good hands.
We are, indeed. So with that, I'll turn to Erin.
Thank you, Stephen. So our purpose of the briefing today, as Stephen said, is to give you an update on what we've accomplished in the last two years in the FY 23-25 Planning Work Program, and then to preview the tasks that we expect will be proposed for the next work program. Our policy question we'll come back to at the end is what input does the Board have for the Planning Work Program, our preview, and the schedule? So as an overview of our planning work program, the Planning Work Program covers three different teams, which Stephen just introduced by introducing our section leaders. Community planning maintains and updates the land use components of the county's comprehensive plan, and that includes the community plans as well as the Community Development Code. Transportation planning maintains and updates the transportation elements of the comprehensive plan, which includes the transportation development plan. The Development Review Current Planning Team reviews land use development proposals to ensure that they are aligned with our regulatory standards, and they provide general development assistance to the community. They also coordinate pretty extensively with the other two teams, as well as with our Building Services Team, because they are the implementers of our regulations. The purpose of having a planning work program is to identify and prioritize the work that we'll be doing within this two-year period. There are always a number of competing demands for our work, so it's important that we have this conversation, and specifically so that the Board can authorize what land use ordinance is that teams will be bringing forward for your consideration during this time period. Our work program includes our mandatory tasks as well as our discretionary tasks, and that encompasses ordinances, issue papers, studies, and special projects. This work program is an attempt to balance our resources, both in terms of staff and budget. We balance our routine tasks and our non-discretionary tasks. For example, we don't know always how many development review applications we'll receive, but we know that we have a certain number of days in which we must review them after we have received them. So there's some work that we're always doing upstairs. We're also balancing our regulatory requirements when those are coming down from the state or from metro. We are also taking into consideration prior input and guidance from the Board and updating with other new information as it comes along. And then we attempt to respond to community input and requests and bring those forward as well for the Board to consider. For the 23-25 work program, we organized our work around themes that were aligned with other Board priorities. And so the four themes we identified were housing production and affordability, natural resources and climate, multimodal transportation system planning and funding, and plan and code updates. As I said, much of planners' work is non-discretionary, and that includes our development review, plan amendments, transportation modeling, data analysis. We administer the Transportation Development Tax Program, which is applied countywide, and so we support our cities in implementing that program, and we implement it for ourselves. We also implement the statewide Transit Improvement Fund through the state, and so we manage that program for areas outside of the TRIMED and SMART boundaries, and we support our Planning Commission, which we're required to have by the state. So sometimes our specific projects may change, but a lot of our work just continues. We are now going to talk about the status of the tasks that we've completed, some of which are underway and some of which we identified within this last work program, but we haven't had the resources to start yet. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Carol.
Thank you, Erin. It's a pleasure to be before you this afternoon, and I am so privileged to be a member of this team and just still, you know, learning what we're all up to. So we had sixteen Tier One tasks in the last, or the current biennial budget, and of those, eight have been substantially complete, six are underway, and two haven't yet been started. We had ten Tier Two tasks, and most of those are largely not started, although there are some aspects of those that we have been able to do some initial work on. So starting with the completed tasks, this first project is one we're very familiar with. This was an over-six-year effort that culminated in an adoption of ordinance in November of this year and went into effect on December 5th, which we were all very happy about because that lifted the stay and clarified the regulations for our development community. And it was a significant effort because of the need to incorporate the clear and objective language, which we now know is a standard that will be coming to the forefront as we move through any future regulation changes. The next one is Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities. There, I'm learning a lot of acronyms here at the county, so CFECC is a term that you'll hear a lot. And we did the first element of that, which was Ordinance 903, which addressed some of the initial parking requirements. There's an aspect related to our traffic safety plan, which we'll be incorporating. We'll hear a little bit more about that in a future slide. And then we're also working on establishing the boundary for the Raleigh Hills Town Center. That's the last town center that we are obligated to approve to be in compliance with the metro requirements.
How long did it take you to get through the SFR?
Six years.
I didn't hear that. I'm sorry if you said that. Yeah, I was thinking, that's been on this list for a while.
For a long time, right?
Big victory lap. Were there any developers waiting in line once the effective date?
Surprisingly, we haven't heard a lot from the development community. You know, we might touch on that later, but things have kind of calmed down in the current planning development review section, but a significant uptick in building permits right now. So, yeah. And there could have been a few properties that were waiting on the stay to be lifted because they had those resources identified on the property, but it's only been a couple. Yeah. Yeah. So this transportation item, the transportation element of the Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP, is an ongoing item that will be updated annually. The, we've done a minor transportation system update to address the minor amendments, and there was an engrossed ordinance that was going to do some refinements of certain areas, but that was appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals and remanded back to us, and we haven't done any additional work on that at this time. One of the projects that came before your Board, just immediately after I started, was the Countywide Transit Development Plan. So that was adopted by Resolution Order 2488 on December 3rd of 2024, and it was part of our Washington County vision for transit. And then we're doing ongoing trails and planning coordination. The bulk of our efforts have been around the Council Creek Regional Trail, although we're also doing significant work on Salmonberry Trail at present. We often, and sometime, this is something that we're not always sure on the timing of this, but the urban growth boundary expansion and then the implementation associated with that, updating urban planning area agreements, UPAAs. We are currently in process of the Tiger River Terrace 2.0. And then things have slowed down a little bit in North Plains, and then, as you know, Senate Bill 4 was anticipated to potentially expand area for semiconductor and advanced manufacturing expansion, and the Governor opted not to take advantage of that. So our focus right now is on the Tiger River Terrace 2.0. The housing production, housing affordability is something that is a new requirement for the county. We're actually being treated somewhat similarly to cities. This is the first time we've had to do a housing needs analysis and housing, excuse me, and housing capacity analysis and housing production strategy, and it's part of the overall ONA Oregon Housing Needs Analysis Program. The rulemaking, just, there's two phases of rulemaking. One just concluded in January of this year, and then there's a second phase. And we've been working with staff at DLCD to establish the timeline for us to complete our work, because we're kind of the first county out the door. They've given us a little bit of grace, and so we're looking at 2029 and 2030 for completion of our work on this project. There is still a lot of work that we've been doing. And Kelly on our staff has been participating in the rulemaking committee, so we're, you know, in at the ground level, know what all changes are happening, so we'll be prepared to respond quickly. This next project is one that I find really exciting because the opportunities to do this kind of work don't come around very often, and that's an assessment of our Community Development Code. We're so busy responding to state mandates and the need to update this section and that section that many of you know our code is accreted over time, so it's a document about this thick, if you print it out. And I don't know what the weight of this document is.
We should weigh it.
It's pretty hefty.
Substantial.
Six pounds, six pounds. It could cause some significant damage, although we hear there's a story where it actually prevented some damage.
Damage to Mary Manso's owners.
So this is really a technical exercise, but it's really to, you know, go through and do a consistency analysis. We've identified a lot of procedural changes, missing definitions, and things of that sort that will be going to this project. But the project initiation was delayed a little bit because of all the work that DLCD is doing. They had kind of monopolized all of the consultants that do this kind of work. So we had to wait until they had capacity, and they're actually providing the funding directly to the consultant, and so we're the client recipient. But this work has just kicked off, and we'll be doing a briefing session on this in the near future. We're also in the process of doing an issue paper on rural housing options, and on this one, we're really focusing on rural accessory dwelling units because we know that's a community priority. Transportation System Plan, we're going to be doing a major system update. We're doing scoping on this project right now, and we anticipate sharing that with the community in the fall of the scoping, sharing that with the community in the fall of 2025. And then this second one on the Complete Streets Design Update is one that's been a long time in the making because it really is a collaborative project between our engineering team in LUT, up to, and our engineer, looking at the county road design and construction standards, and then how that then will help us develop more complete streets. There are some policy updates that will also be incorporated into the Transportation System Plan update. Farmington Road Concept Plan is one where we're actually looking at a specific project. We've been developing and evaluating design alternatives. We had a community workshop in December that I was able to attend, had a really great turnout, and we're taking in all that public comment and developing alternatives at this time. And we're in the process of developing a preferred alternative to be shared with the community in May and anticipate bringing this before the Board in July of 2025. Another, I think, very important project is addressing safety with the update of our Transportation Safety Action Plan. We're trying to look at, you know, near-term things that we can do to identify, to address identified safety issues across the county, and that's anticipated to be completed the end of 2025.
Can I go back just for a second on Farmington Road? I'm not, I know where 209th is, but I'm not sure where Kenneaman is. But then we go from Kenneaman to Murray. So is that stretch in better condition, or is that the step?
Yeah, that section, Commissioner, was improved back in probably the 90s. So it's five lanes through, from Murray to Kenneaman essentially, and then from Inman to 209th is the two-lane section that's still under ODOT jurisdiction.
Okay, so that's the part where we're going to...
Or actually, it's 198th is the end of ODOT jurisdiction.
Well, yeah, it's a combination of ownerships in there that we're going to try and pull together, and then that's what this project will actually complete that through to 209th.
Right, so this is the concept plan, so really just scoping a future improvement? Yeah.
Yeah, there's no money to it, I understand that. It's just a planning.
But the purpose of doing the planning is to come up with a cost estimate for how much it would cost to improve it to the standard we'd like to see, and then begin negotiations with the ODOT as a part of a jurisdictional transfer so that we can build it up to what we expect to see.
Yeah. Hey, thank you.
Okay, and we've got a, this is a little bit of a placeholder minor comprehensive plan amendments. This work task item is intended to capture things that we haven't been able to anticipate, changes coming out of state law, regional decisions, and then also elements that come out of our Community Development Code Assessment. And this is going to be carrying over into the work plan for the next biennial. We had two issue papers on deck that have not yet been started. One is around contractors' establishments, and then the second is about the interim park system development charge for Tuolton Hills Parks and Recreation District. This was an intent to kind of identify areas that are outside their current boundaries, but in their ultimate service area, and start collecting fees for future park needs in those areas.
Can you just, the word, like contractor's establishments, just, I don't know exactly what that means. Can you clarify what that?
Yeah, they're basically contractor yard that are allowed in certain districts within the county. I think the one that's most problematic is FD 20 district, which is the zone that we put on as a kind of transitional or interim zoning when a jurisdiction's intending to or has annexed an area, but they haven't established their own. The city jurisdiction hasn't established their own.
So they tend to not have a lot of constructed infrastructures, a part of contractors' establishments. They use them to store gravel and equipment and things that they may need in order to build, let's say, road projects or something like that. They're very common in our non-resource zoned areas, agricultural forest 5 and 10, for example. So when those areas come into the urban growth boundary and we apply FD 20, they're still allowed to have that as a use, but the area is transitioning, and we start to see conflicts with residential uses, and ultimately what the cities would like to see developed in those areas as well. Part of the problem with our code is that we don't actually have a really clear definition of a contractor's establishment. It's kind of an ephemeral term. We know what it is when we see one, kind of a thing. They tend to be a bit of a nuisance for some of our cities. Wilsonville, in particular, had requested this item to be put on our work program years ago so we could clarify our code standards.
So the issue paper is to clarify the code, bring it in front of the Board?
Right, to identify what changes we should make to our code so that there's a more clear definition of what they are and what regulations they have to follow, and then that would be presented to the Board as an ordinance amending the Community Development Code.
How long you can still have one, or what?
I'm not sure it would address that specifically.
I mean, isn't that one of the issues, sort of?
When the cities, when the cities annex the areas, then they control the zoning, and they can make that determination.
Not really our place, per se.
Yeah, it's kind of a, it's a temporal issue. One, an area remains FD 20 for a very long time and hasn't been annexed into a city.
Yeah, to your point, Commissioner, I think those are the kinds of things we can explore in the issue paper. Are there potential, you know, build-in, a five-year renewal period or something like that? Those are all things that we could explore.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think the original thinking was that because there's no structures, that, you know, it would, there wouldn't be a significant investment in development of the property and make it easier to transition to those future, more urban uses. But because they are so lucrative, we're not seeing them turn over as was originally envisioned.
Just for me to check my understanding, is there one of these just south of Mountainside right now?
Why don't you take that offline with you?
Certainly.
That's fine.
Okay.
I just want to understand better.
Right. So we did begin work on some Tier Two tasks, including preparation of a town center boundary for Raleigh Hills Town Center, and this is a requirement of the CFECC, Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities, as well as the Metro Functional Area Plan. And also, this second bullet item is a little bit on hold right now. Flood plane updates to address FEMA pre-implementation compliance measures. Also, you'll hear the term pick 'em. There is a lawsuit pending, and it hasn't even kind of gotten off the ground. There's arguments over where to actually hold the trial, and so we're kind of in a wait-and-see. And staff has prepared a briefing memo for your Board that will be coming very soon. We're just waiting for an update on the status of that case. And then Erin's working on a very important project on the Urban Services Framework.
I can, yes, this is a new project that was authorized in the fall, and we are working really closely with county leadership, as well as leadership of the cities of Tigerd and Beaverton on this project. It's an opportunity to do technical analysis of the cost of providing urban services to our urban unincorporated areas and explore some of the challenges of that, some of the future possibilities for that, and really have an opportunity to work with those two cities specifically. We'll be briefing your Board more extensively on that project on April 22nd.
Yeah, I think there was a memo that came from Stephen Roberts.
Yesterday, yes.
I tried to glance at it last night, but hopefully there's a definition of what an urban services is. I look forward to learning more.
There is, yes.
As we talk about city services and urban services, and I think it'll be really clear, it'll be helpful to clarify what those definitions mean because people in the unincorporated areas of Washington County do pay taxes and...
County-wide taxes.
Yeah, county-wide taxes isn't expected to get county-wide services, right? So not a city, because they're not in cities. So I really look forward to, I was excited to see the letter. I got distracted and didn't fully read, but I intend to read and look forward to those definitions.
And one of the outcomes of that work is to develop a common understanding of what all of those terms mean.
So now we're transitioning to kind of look forward to the next work plan, which will cover fiscal years 25 through 27. We will be carrying over some of those incomplete items from the current work plan and adding new mandatory tasks. So we really don't have much discretion in terms of our work plan because of the budget and staff limitations. So we're looking at, again, moving the FEMA-required floodplain regulations. This is incorporating clear and objective standards to those rules up to a Tier One, developing a boundary ordinance for Raleigh Hills Town Center, doing a major update for the Transportation System Plan, working with Sherwood on their UGV expansion ordinance, assisting with plan changes as needed for Skoggins Valley Park, and then the Rural Clear and Objective Standards applies to the Significant Natural And then the rural clear and objective standards applies to the significant natural resources in that area, but also all housing. And then some ideas that we hope to get some feedback on are regarding the rural accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Adding significant natural resource related omnibus ordinance. There's some map cleanups and other kind of code cleanups that we've identified. And then gave board interest in further work on S and, significant natural resource monitoring and enforcement. So, oh yes, sorry.
Yeah, ADUs, we've got, there's some legislation going on with ADUs. I think a different type of ADU than what we're talking about here. But so is, is that gonna have some impact on, on that project there of that ordinance?
It could, so there's a number of different housing-related things happening at the legislature right now. And so we won't know till the end of session what is actually adopted and what that means for our regulations. But a few years ago, the legislature adopted new legislation that allowed for rural accessory units. It became permissive. We haven't until now had the opportunity to look into that and adopting that into our code allowances.
So hang on a second. I feel like this bullet is getting a little ahead of itself. Slide 14 talks about all the work that's still underway. And so some of this work is still underway in 25, 27. And I can't remember, oh, okay, yeah, fiscal year 25 through fiscal year 27. Okay, so that bullet read like, since it was so straightforward, it read like, oh, well, that work's already done. And it's like, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Yeah, right, no.
You know, I'm just trying to keep my eyes wide open and my ears totally open around there are time and capacity limitations. So don't want to overcommit and under-deliver.
Right.
Finish the work.
Yes.
And, which includes, because it talks about in the last bullet on slide 18, to begin developing an ordinance, so.
Exactly, yeah. So we have an issue paper that's about ready to share with the board. And we're planning on sharing that issue paper as a part of putting together the proposed work program. So you'll see what we've explored in the issue paper. And then we would like that to lead to filing an ordinance.
Well, I, can we go back to slide 14?
Yes, sure.
We're at the end of March, for all intents and purposes. So bullet number two, a briefing memo is coming this spring. April, May gets wicked hectic. And then you talk about an issue paper and I'm thinking about my capacity to absorb an issue paper between now and the end of June. And I'm like, okay, so that's all.
We understand that. And actually, we were looking at this presentation this morning as we were practicing and we thought, oh, that probably should have said summer. I think we were being a little overly.
Consider that summer.
Exactly, yeah. So let's consider that you'll see the issue paper in the summer, you'll be done with the budget. Hopefully you'll have a chance to take a look at it.
Thank you Chair Harrington for calling that question.
And if the authorization to file the ordinance is included in the work program, but we're not quite there yet and we need to do some more research, that's okay as well. It's, it's not mandatory that we then file the ordinance by a specific date. It's something that we can continue working towards.
I know we, we all get there together. Just trying to make sure it feels doable.
We are often very aspirational. Occupational hazard.
Well, and on one hand, I like that optimism. But it's March. I want everyone who's planning a spring break vacation to take it. I want everyone to plan their summer holiday vacations and take them. So that's all.
So here we are at next step. So we'd asked for the board's consideration of tasks and any changes before we send this out for public review. We've tentatively set a timeline for distributing this for public review in an online open house from April 15th through May 30th. And then we will return with a proposed final work program for board adoption on July 15th. So in closing, policy questions. What input does the board have on the planning work program, either status report, preview, or schedule?
Before the policy question, I just happened to open the MPAC packet. Your MPAC rep, your MPAC rep?
Alternative, I'm an alternative.
Who's our MPAC rep?
I'm Mr. Tree.
That was the question, thank you. The Regional Housing Coordination Strategy. Sounds like there's some work here there you all. There's this handy dandy little timeframe. How is that in this?
So that's.
Is it one of those, it's buried in there mandated things?
It sort of is. And the non-discretionary tasks that we do, regional coordination is sometimes, if you pictured the font getting bigger, sometimes that font gets real big and it's a third of the page, right? So when things like that happen, we do dedicate staff time to tracking that work and making sure that we are ready to implement as required to do so.
Well, this is where I would like to have more visibility into what that mandated non-discretionary work is. In part of, there are some things here. Contractor establishments. You know, I read that and I was reminded of the issues that we've seen in the constituent reports for the longest time. And I'm like, darn, I don't want that to keep getting pushed out. Because that is problematic between our cities and ourselves. And so, you know, it's like, sorry, Metro, you know, we got other work we have to do. And I'm not sure how to get that into the mix. You know, they have a learned behavior that, oh, well, they'll just have to adjust their stuff. And some things I don't think we can adjust so readily. I'm really looking forward to learning more from the rural housing options. You know, 80% of our acreage is rural. So, you know, it's, does that mean that there will be more flexibility in these smaller rural communities like Cottage Grove? Is that the name of it out near Cherry Grove? Cherry Grove, thank you. Yeah, sorry, the whole flooding had Cottage Grove in my head versus Cherry Grove. And other like rural enclaves, I forget the names of them off the top of my head. Versus, you know, necessarily out on a, and they, it could pertain to a rural property holding that has one house now on multiple acres, where it makes sense to allow other housing solutions.
I would just say that, I'm listening to what you just said. I have picked up on a theme at county college in, in many, I mean, most of the counties attending are much more rural. It's just a massive issue. And I, what I've taken from that is that's gotta be an issue for our rural communities too. And, and just listening to what the dynamics are and what that means for people and working and not, you know, not having housing. We think of housing really as a, I think, we commonly think of it as sort of an urban problem. And it is not just an urban problem.
Right, right. And so that is an issue or a topic where we are a county government. We have to do rural land use planning. And sorry, Metro, you can't suck up all the air in the room.
Well, so maybe our approach on that is to, you know, acknowledge it needs to be done and do it when we, as soon as we can practically.
The metro work?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Like, we'll do it as soon as we can practically get it done.
Yep, yep.
But it's not going to come in front of things that we view as more important.
So Ms. Duke Drayson and my colleagues up to now, up before this year, have had the opportunity to hear me say in multiple forums. So please be ready for a situation where Metro tries some kind of enforcement action on us because we have to get to other things. We only have so much capacity. And I imagine that will be a legal form. But as long as we are organized around what we need to do and why we need to do it, and that's where the work plan comes in for me. We, we, we can't go on with some of these problems that are not rooted in metro regulation. Unless, of course, they want to pay us to hire a new planner for the three to 10 years it takes to keep up with all of their creativity. We just can't do it. So I'll get off that soapbox. And now we can get to the policy questions. Commissioner Collins?
I think, I think, to me, I don't usually do this, but on page 35 of this attachment are the required county planning activities. And I, I was just impressed. 400 plus land development proposals, 160 land use code compliance complaints for floodplain management, 50,000 customer inquiries each year. And the list goes on. You know, those numbers are pretty staggering and we, we lose sight of that, I think, sometimes when we start to look at this and our vision becomes fairly narrow. And then we say, oh yeah, then you got to go to work and do what the customers expect you to do. Yeah, so that was impressive. I, I don't know why I made it to 30, page 35 of this.
It was riveting.
Really, really impressed.
We are a large jurisdiction and we help a lot of development happen.
I have this theme.
Yes, you do.
If you write it, I will read it.
I usually leave that up to you Chair.
Oh, now I'm with you all.
Commissioner Willie, do you have more?
Nope, that's it, that's just, I just wanted to point that out, the sheer numbers.
Chair, can I?
Yes, please.
So I know you, I, I don't know if there's intentional glossing over and maybe this isn't the right venue, but I guess I think it kind of is. What is the plan for the minor TSP update that ended up in the Luba appeal? And sort of the, I mean, you, you all just kind of, maybe it was on purpose, but like, what's the plan?
Our plan is to continue working directly with the city of Tigard as they move through their River Terrace 2.0 comprehensive planning. Diame is sitting on their Technical Advisory Committee to do some of the transportation planning. And so we think that will be the most productive way to sort that out. There isn't a requirement that we do anything specifically with the remand. At some point, it would probably be a good idea just to close the door on it in some way. But we'd like to see how the comprehensive planning finishes before we do that.
And we're, I mean, obviously we're participating in that.
We are, yes.
If I can be helpful in that, outside of this, let me know. There is any political assistance?
I'll chime in and say, great presentation. I think you put together a comprehensive work plan. You come and provided the pages to make the explanation why this is your work plan. And I have no reason to doubt, so I trust you. And go forth and look forward to any of the board actions that are coming back. I think one thing that I'm hoping that in the future will come in front of the board is sort of a countywide dwelling accessory units. But hopefully that will come from the state and it will be, it will be attached to some money for counties and cities to implement. Because Commissioner, Commissioner Snyder said it is part of the housing solutions.
I, I'm confused, ADUs are already allowed uses?
Yes.
You're talking about the rural?
No, okay, so I was just trying to, because this, I've, I've had this conversation with the staff. But just to provide some context. Currently, if, if, if I requested, if I requested a permit to build an ADU, there is a about $12,000 fee. Correct me if I'm wrong, staff.
The transportation development.
Yeah, so the TDT. I think we've seen some, some community members request a waiver of that fee. Cities and counties are not in position because, you know, we need, how do we gonna, where are we gonna get that money is the question. So ideally, this, this will be something, a problem that state could solve. That says, here's the solution. And here's a complimentary check to counties to sort of augment your budgets and to waive the fees, required TDT fees for community members. That currently doesn't happen. And it is my understanding that we get about 12 applicants per year, about 10 or 12. And we can't waive those. And I think we've seen some community members that say, please waive these. This is why I'm building really compelling stories. But we're not in a position to waive those fees currently. So I, I, so I'm having, you know, as much as I can, state legislators to sort of put that plug in there. And we've seen some wins here and there, we'll continue to champion. And I'm hopeful for something with yield.
I think some jurisdictions, even in Washington County, have made adjustments to SDCs like the transportation development tax that, or for those kinds of things.
I think Tigard used to have.
They have funds that cover it. So this topic that you're referring to has not been part of though our Washington County State Legislative Agenda?
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
But this is just everyone's interest, kind of a legislative. Go for it.
What's in the parking lot? So.
Is that what's on this?
Well, historically, I thought I, we had seen a bigger list.
So as a part of developing the work program, we do go out to the community and we ask for input. And that typically generates a list of possible things that we could work on that the community is interested in. And we will share that with the board when we come back for the proposed work program. The problem tends to be that we have this very long list of other things people would like us to work on and we don't have the capacity. And so that's the prioritization that we have to do.
I think I'm, now, this is a, it's taken a while to get back to this, but I recall seeing a tier-one, a tier-two, I don't know.
A tier-three, yeah.
What I would, because we never get to tier-three. But so that's the parking lot. But so I guess we still have that, we just haven't seen.
We have the information, but we have absolutely no bandwidth.
Yeah, how is that different than the ideas that are on slide 20? The ideas for updates, like are, are those ones you're asking us for input on or not? Like I'm, I'm slightly.
So.
Help me with what that slide's trying to.
Yes, so these are three specific points that we'd like to receive board guidance on. Again, as a part of the work program that you'll adopt on July 15th, so that we can move forward with ordinances or other updates relating to these items. The reason they're called out is that they either involve filing an ordinance, which we need authorization for, or because it would be a relatively large amount of work. And so these are not things that were included in the 23, 25 work program specifically, but we think we should include them in the next one.
And you're wanting that input today or you're wanting that input in the future?
If you would like to give us feedback today, that's great. If you're not ready to give us that feedback yet, we'll take it in the future.
Well, so we gave you feedback on the rural accessory dwelling.
That's already done.
On the S and R one, when we adopted that, you talked about needing to come back in. And so when, when you were going over that slide, I thought, oh, that's related to that. I don't need to ask about it, so.
Yeah, I would say we.
It sounds, it seems to me like we're already obligated to some of this work. So I'm not really sure what you're wanting.
We're just checking in and making sure you're still okay with that. Because the board could say, don't update the S and R maps again, we actually don't want to do that, but we think we should.
Well, it begs the question, before you tee that question up, we need to know what would the, what would the effect be if we don't follow through on these things? Are we going to end up right back before LCDC or whomever and earn another stay? And it's like, no, when we adopted that ordinance, you said there would be this, this follow-up stuff.
And it's more meeting those community expectations, that we knew that in the process of developing those maps, we would likely have to go back and do some cleanups. And so we committed to the community if we couldn't do a. And so we committed to the community. If we couldn't do it before we filed the ordinance, we would have the opportunity to do it in the future. But it wasn't identified as a new filed ordinance in the last work program.
Oh, I think you're making it too hard for us.
Okay.
Okay.
We just need to do it.
Yeah.
I'm getting.
Yeah.
What is the third bullet there, though? That's related to natural resources. But they, that looks like something that takes more time and more money and is not required.
Correct.
Those kind of things have my attention right now.
And as a part of the S and R ordinances, we heard a lot of feedback from the community that they would like to see more monitoring and enforcement on S and Rs. And so we were looking for board guidance on whether or not you would like us to pursue doing that as a part of this next work program.
How would it be paid for?
It would push other things off of our priority list if we were to do that.
Well, we, I think our interest is we adopted the ordinance with a certain process and rules. It's that, so how do we make sure that the requirements that must be followed are in fact followed? Beyond that, it seems like a nice to have, that we don't have bandwidth for. Because our, our cup runneth over.
And that's consistent with what we had heard from the board throughout that ordinance process.
So when you get to yes, the saying goes. So, um, I think you've, you've got the feedback from all of us on the topics as you presented. So we look forward to, uh, learning more, uh, through or after your next steps as enumerated under section seven. Here we come, the middle of July already.
I know. It's going to go fast. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Welcome to our team, Carol.
Thank you so much. Yes.
Glad to have you.
Excellent work. Okay. Well, our next topic is on the data sharing agreement, uh, with our metro regional government for the supportive housing services. Originally, we were going to have the full-throated presentation at our business meeting tonight. But I kind of forgot that we teed up a budget committee meeting after the business meeting tonight. So, uh, we're here to have staff present it to us in a little bit of a short form. Um, uh, well, if we go by the schedule, you have till two twenty-five.
That's what I needed.
So, um, and so tonight we'll just, I'll just be apologizing for the fact that, uh, due to timing, please watch the video from the work session. So here before us is Jess Larson, the Assistant Director, Director from the Department of Housing, and Erin Doyle, our Government Relations Director, Manager, Department Manager. I can't remember. There you go. Well said.
I'm just here because when we're at supportive housing services, you show up on an agenda, I just magically appear. That's how I am a wizard.
There's lots of local government partnerships going on with SHS. So that's why our wizard is here. Take it away.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon. Commissioners Jess Larson, Assistant Director of the Department of Housing Services. Uh, for the record, happy to bring this brief presentation for you on the work of our data sharing agreement. Um, can we bring up this? Thank you. Um, that has been underway for a couple of years in, uh, the, among the four jurisdictional parties in the SHS program. And it's taken some time to get here and that has, uh, caused some consternation. So we're really, really happy to be at this milestone finally um, and bringing you this brief overview of what is in our data sharing agreement for, uh, the, the program. Um, so, uh, why share data? That's like, where did we begin? Where do we begin here? So as, as you will recall, the supportive housing services measure includes an, a commitment through our intergovernmental agreement between the four parties, the three counties and metro, that we will, um, create, we would create a, a data sharing agreement to give Metro access to disaggregated, de-identified data. So this has been understood and agreed to from the very beginning of our work together. The goal is that with this, uh, this regionally coordinated debt data, Metro will be able to roll up information to provide, uh, further insight into how the regional program is achieving its progress towards the goals and conduct further research to inform planning and program evaluation so that we can continue to improve our program implementation. So that is the intent behind the data sharing agreement, which all parties have been supportive of since whenever it was we signed that intergovernmental agreement way back when.
In January of twenty twenty-two.
Yes.
We have been doing this. And we've been, it's been agreed, but has it been implemented?
Question. So.
Why don't we let her get through the presentation?
The, the milestone we are achieving is now the actual official, uh, technical work has been done to create the ability to send this data to Metro, which will begin officially the first quarter after the IGA is signed, which is the request of this presentation and will be action item on the agenda tonight to approve the signature of the data sharing agreement. So this slide is a quick, high-level overview of what is data when it comes to homeless services work and how we, uh, how, what is the intention essentially of our HMIS data, homeless management information system? So that we can coordinate the resources, coordinate the services, the care, and through this, uh, through HMIS, better serve our community with the collection of data that allows for that evaluation. This itself is a work of continuous improvement. Um, there is a whole additional future conversation we're going to have with your board when we advance the current HMIS system, HMIS system in partnership with Multnomah County and Clackamas County, because Multnomah County currently holds our contract with Wellsky, which is our vendor for HMIS. And we are working on a long-term, longer-term project that will, uh, improve the quality of those services and look for a potential new vendor through a regional procurement process. Well, it'll be a national procurement process or a regional procurement, procurement process to attract national expertise to be our future vendor for this regional system to further improve upon what we're able to do with HMIS. So HMIS is its own set of complexities. Today's conversation and this data sharing agreement is just about the data we get out of HMIS and then can now and will now share with. So that, that is the next slide here, a little bit about HMIS. This is a, a data collection or data management system that has, uh, been in place here in Washington County ever since we began the work of our continuum of care work. It comes out of our requirement through that federal grant we receive. Uh, and we have been working originally with the city of Portland, but recently that work of administering HMIS was transitioned to Multnomah County. I see I got ahead of my slides a little bit. And so Multnomah, Washington County and Clackamas County work in partnership with Washington, with Multnomah County, pardon me, um, in the implementation of our HMIS system. And we're currently working on that modernization as I previously, previously described. How HMIS data works? So first, the counties establish those data standards. We define the terms. What is homeless? What is housed? How do we define the date of entry into a program, those kind of details? And we create the guidelines and then we teach our providers, our service providers, how to collect the data from the people they are serving and input that data into HMIS. Then we oversee that data collection work and we do data quality continuously with our partners through training, tracking, monitoring, follow-up. Uh, and then we pull out the data once it's been, um, the quality improvement work has been done to create things like our reports to our funders, to do evaluations of our programs and to track our by-name lists of who's currently homeless in our system and how and where are they being served. So HMIS includes on the right-hand side, you can just see at a high level, the participant data, the kinds of services they're being received. So this person entered a shelter on this state. Oh, over here, they're also getting services through this program. And so we can track them at an individual level. And ultimately what we're tracking towards is when they enter into housing and how long that housing is kept or how long they are stably housed. So that's HMIS. And now moving into this milestone of the data sharing agreement with Metro. Uh, it is a template for how, what will be included in our quarterly submission of the data that is shared between Washington County and Metro. It includes eighty-four elements of data. Uh, we're really leaning heavily on the universal data elements that were, are defined through HUD. And then there are some additional local and SHS specific elements. You're very familiar with population A and B, for example. Those are not HUD data elements. They are local data elements. And they will be in this data sharing agreement. Oh, absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, and then, uh, the types of data, we want to be really clear that this is, these are the household characteristics like age, race and ethnicity, disability, the characteristics related to the programs that they're served in and then how long they're enrolled and what were the outcomes of those enrollments. But all of this data is de-identified. So there's no individual identifying information that is passed through the sharing agreement.
Oh, person one, person two, person.
Exactly. There's actually a methodology that the counties have worked to create that we can ensure that we will deduplicate the data if an individual.
Ding. Please unding. Thank you.
Uh, in, in the event that there is an individual in Washington County system and also in Clackamas County's system, they will each have the, in, in each system, they will have the same identifying number. So the information is deduplicated when it is sent to Metro, even though none of the other person, uh, personal identifying characteristics will be shared in that.
Can I ask a question about the de-identifying piece of your comment? So we get the data, you know, Washington County gets is not de-identified.
That's correct.
The, the information we're going to give to Metro is de-identified.
That's correct.
So why, to one government, to another government entity, why the de-identification to Metro?
Excellent question. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, as the implementer of, or is the overseer of coordinated entry, which is the tool that we use for connecting individuals with the right level of care and intervention in services based on their household needs and eligibility. We are, we have staff who are inside, have access to HMIS data and are able to see the individual characteristics of that data so that they can work in partnership with our service providers, our shelter providers, outreach, housing providers to help coordinate that level of care. So we, uh, must adhere to the, uh, uh, data, data privacy standards and expectations that HUD sets with all, uh, entities that have access to that level of data, which is consistent for all of our service providers as well. But when a, and, and that is a requirement all continuum of care services operators. What Metro is not a continuum of care operator. And so it, it, we wouldn't be able to extend that level of data to them because they, they don't have that same sort of oversight and, or responsibilities and program implementation and working directly with the individuals who are receiving that care.
Need for them to have that either.
There is also.
If they can link them between counties with a identifier, it doesn't matter.
Yep.
Data, I mean, if they don't know who the person is, that's irrelevant to the data.
It's taken a while for that to be understood.
For them to get there.
Through all of staff as well as all of the Metro Council.
I, I think that there has been some confusion along the way, absolutely, Chair. And the parties all agreed to disaggregated, de-identified data at the beginning when the, or, an original IGA was created. And so that language has been very clear throughout, even though, as correct, there has been confusion throughout the process. Um, primarily the confusion was about getting drilling down to those eighty-four data elements. That took a bulk of the work of the counties. A lot of technical time spent at the tables with the, the HMIS data-specific staff. And for a while, Metro didn't yet have their, their staff member who had that same level of, of technical knowledge. They've since hired that data expert who can sit at the table, uh, shoulder to shoulder with our data experts. And they were able to get to those eighty-four data elements. And then the next stage of the negotiation really came down to this slide, which was, um, uh, again, a technical misunderstanding and the difference between data validation and the coordination of communications to, to the public, um, that would come from about the data that was analyzed through this data sharing agreement. So we were able to get, uh, the leadership from all four jurisdictions together to further understand that data validation is that process we go through to ensure that any anal, analysis done with the data that is shared is correctly conducted so that the data is rolling up between the three counties into a, a report that Metro is creating with the correct understanding of what that data is sharing, or sorry, what that data is describing. It is not a process that reviews or critiques the data analysis. It's just ensuring that it's an accurate approach to that data. And it's important that this work is done so that we can ensure we're transparently and clearly sharing the data with our community and we're not misstating what those outcomes might be. So we now have a clear process that's described in the data sharing agreement for that data validation. So the counties have time to review Metro's data staff's work in their data analysis before it is shared publicly. And then also the coordination on communications, which has always been a part of our data sharing, pardon me, our original intergovernmental agreement with Metro. Uh, so that's the summation of our new regional data sharing agreement with Metro. And, um, Erin will be with you all tonight to help introduce the item and bring it forward for your action. But I'm happy to take any questions you have about the process or the technical elements of this work.
You said there will be an opportunity in the future to be talking more about the HIMSS process and system. We're not doing that today. I know it's not directly related to this, but there will be a future venue for that?
I, I believe that we are eager to bring that forward to the board for your awareness and, and further, um,
Thank you.
Uh, direction. Yes, absolutely.
Jess, thank you for your presentation. I have a couple of quick questions. The, the data sharing slide, um, slide number nine, uh, data sharing data to data. Uh, you called out the characteristics of the person. I don't see gender in there. It's just, just an example.
Yes, this is not extensive. There are eighty-four elements. So these are just quick, just kind of descriptions of the type, the kind of data.
And then the other question I have and, uh, is that the frequency of this data sharing with the Metro?
Thank you for that question. I, I missed that in, uh, the details. It's quarterly. So it is, uh, it's tied to our quarterly action of the data quality our staff is doing to prepare for the quarterly reports. And then our data will be relatively cleaned up and ready to be de-identified and disaggregated so that it can be sent to Metro.
I've listed on Schedule A of the document we'll be approving.
I'm really happy that we're finally to this point.
We got there.
Yeah, because, um, I think it's been used against us and so it's time we move on.
So, um, I have two questions.
Thank you.
One is, uh, attachment one, the data sharing template is blank. So I'm not sure why it's listed.
I will follow up and make sure we correct that. Okay.
Uh, we pulled it out of the, um, system and so it might just, in the DocuSign system. So it might just be a pull-down challenge. And if we need to amend the packet, we can do that.
Yep. Thank you.
Sorry, I, I didn't realize I should have asked about it when I.
We, we're moving on.
Saying request landed in my inbox. I practically ran over to Erin Doyle's office. What am I supposed to do with this? We haven't approved it yet. As long as I wanted to sign the hot potato.
Blank page is not a TBD.
No.
No. A hyperlink that is.
Yes, we decide after Catherine signs it.
Maybe that is a hyperlink through the data sharing template, but it, to me, it looks like rev marks, so I didn't click on it.
Yeah, uh, we will make sure that that additional information comes through and, and upload the packet when we get it. We'll do.
Yeah. Awesome. Um. Oh, yes. The other question that I have was, um, I can't recall if at the Metro meeting where they, uh, approved this, if they had county staff come in or if it was just in their recent meeting when they went over the quarterly reports. So I was just wondering, what kind of reception did you get from the Metro Council with the data sharing agreement?
Thank you, Commissioner. I was able to attend along with my county peers from Clackamas and Multnomah County and our peers at Metro, um, to present to the Metro Council. to present to the Metro Council the, these, the data sharing agreement. It's actually relatively the similar presentation. And I think there were lots of detailed questions about what would, what was included in the data sharing agreement. Some, some statements and questions around the length of time it took to achieve the data sharing agreement. Some requests and interests for date, further data, data beyond the SHS-funded programs. So this data sharing agreement is specific to what SHS is funding. There are other homeless services conducted across the region, frankly, conducted outside of the departments who are currently operating the SHS-funded programs. So there's much more data out there, and there was some interest in seeing a future when further data might be shared. So it was a combination of a variety of different questions and statements from the councilors. And in the end, they blessed the, the, or gave a thumbs up, if you will, for the the Metro Administrator to sign off on the data sharing agreement.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. I am really thrilled that all the parties have worked through this important aspect of the program and that the continued regionalization efforts will continue. You know, they are great regional goals for the program, both the regionalization goals that TC PB scoped out and the Metro Council approved, as well as the goals of the number of people we're trying to serve and the ones where I abbreviate as ending chronic homelessness and net zero new homeless. So just terrific work to improve the lives of unhoused people throughout our community and make our region a better place for everyone to live. So very proud of the work that you and the other subject matter experts have done. And we look forward to adopting this.
I look, I look forward to seeing the data results that, you know, regionally, that we will all get to collectively, you know, be able to use in the future too.
Well, if you're looking to get familiar with a lot of data right now, look no further than the quarterly reports. Report. So I, I have yet to make it through the full regional annual report that is in all of our inboxes, myself. There's, there's no shortage of things to absorb for all the great work that's happened.
So just have one quick question. This is for Courtney. This, this document is tied to the IGA and when the IGA dies, this dies. So what is the, what's the line? The IGA? Is that at the end of the ten-year period? Okay, so what a good answer, Courtney. It would, it would only make sense then that these two were tied together with that because if we have an IGA issue like we thought we had, then we want these definitely to be tied together. So we don't.
It's a requirement of the IGA. So they are tied together.
Yep.
Thank you.
Right there in the third whereas. Yep. Terrific. Thank you very much for your flexibility schedule-wise. Appreciate it. So thank goodness, we are a little bit ahead of schedule with staff's good work. So we're going to move on to board and leadership communication and formal agenda item discussion. I suggest we check in on the formal agenda first. So once again, to manage time tonight. Item D1 under public hearings has been pulled and will be scheduled for a future meeting. So that leaves us with four public hearings tonight. And on one of them, item four, the public hearing for ordinance number nine oh five. Oh, excuse me. No, sorry. It's an action item. I stand corrected. Four public hearings. On the action items, there are three of those. The data sharing agreement is one. The Disability, Aging and Veteran Services Area Plan, which we had at our recent work session. So we'll have a short presentation on that. Item E3 on CPACE. I sent you all an email. I had the opportunity to meet with some of the CPACE Alliance folks, learn some new things. Ms. Angie will also be meeting with them. And I also encouraged these parties to meet with you. Hence one reason for the change of action today. So the way we have it now is I didn't write it down. Yeah, so we'll have the second read on June 3rd, 2025. So depending upon what we want to do, we'll, we'll come back to it on June 3rd.
And there will be work done in the intervening period. Discussions will.
The work to be done is your meeting with the CPACE folks. Ms. Angie's going to meet with the CPACE folks and see if they're understanding the, what they're, they have said to me is essentially, I'm paraphrasing here. They set up the CPACE program so that it would be an incredibly light lift from jurisdictions, essentially performing a checklist that the applicant had provided the right information. I don't believe that was necessarily part of our understanding when we had the work session. Yeah, exactly. So that'll, that'll give all parties a chance to look into that further. Okay? And also balancing the big load that's going to be coming with all of us between now and the end of May. So. I think that was it. Any questions on any part? We are anticipating a potentially a large crowd, given the elections folks having a, a meeting last night. And so I'm, that's why we've timed it out for public communication, the first session being ten minutes long. The second session being thirty minutes long and estimating how long presentations will take. And then the extraordinary efforts that have been taken to let our budget committee members know that we probably will be starting later than we had originally hoped for the meeting tonight. But also the choice to take that meeting fully virtual so that they wouldn't have to just sit here twiddling their thumbs.
And just a reminder for the board, you will transition into your offices to take the budget committee meeting. That way, everyone has the same screen view so that we can feel like we are in a virtual meeting together. Burke Moss and our amazing IT team will stay within the, the auditorium as we go upstairs for that portion.
By the way, for you CWS folks, can you let Brad know that we'll likely start our exec session early? Okay, terrific. Okay, so board communication. Who wants to kick us off efficiently?
Last Thursday, there was a Explorer to Walton Valley Board meeting. Couple of points I want to make sure I share with the commission. One is that they are looking forward to their more, I think, more direct and formal role in some of the promotion work on behalf of the county. That was mentioned, described. The other thing that I would point out is that they have gotten the message loud and clear that they need to spend some, spend down some of their retained earnings. And, you know, there were a lot of reasons for that to happen during COVID, but it, they, message received loud and clear, and they're figuring out how to take our, our and others' input on that front. So just a couple of details there. Also attended last Thursday, the RFK Foundation intro. Commissioner Fai was there as well. And then the ribbon cutting at the apartment complex, and then the new Metro, or new electeds Metro mixer at the zoo that was well-attended.
Did you get to see the baby?
I did not get to see the baby elephant.
Was it all for new?
It was for newly electeds. So that would, it was interesting. Most people, I, you know, I knew most of the people that were there, but it was good to just check in with everybody. I think the Metro, it was a good opportunity for the Metro staff to meet some of the new electeds that they may not have known.
Metro councilors were there.
Counselor Gonzalez. President Peterson was there. Counselor Rosenthal, that's who I saw. That doesn't, I didn't take, at least don't hold me to that. But that's who I witnessed there. There may have been others. Friday, the fourteenth, I had a lunch with the constituent and then one-on-one with the county administrator. Saturday, I met with Rep Bowman and successfully, I think the result of that was that we got him to sign on as a chief co-sponsor for the for the courthouse. I could not get the right word there, having an elderly moment. So he signed on to the Washington County specific bill. I think that's good news. Monday, spoke at the Washington County Sheriff's Office swearing in and recognition event. And then both Commissioner Fai and I were at the Beaverton State of the City, met with Under Sheriff Cook this morning. I, of note, tomorrow morning, I am not able to be at the Just Compassion Grand Opening, which I've it's one of the things I've probably done the most individually to try to help over my time as an elected official, and I just can't be there, unfortunately. I don't know if others are planning to attend Chair Harrington. You're, you're speaking. So I just wanted to make that note. I'm sad that I can't be there, but I can't. There's a Community Action Board meeting tomorrow night, Thursday morning. I'm going to be touring the Durham CWS facility.
Tomorrow night. Oh, tomorrow night. Yes. Yep. Our electeds briefing should be on the budget.
I'll have to, I'm going to be moving fluidly and quickly, but I will make sure I remain at the the elected's budget session and then run over when it's the right time.
Thank you.
I will prioritize. Let's see. Oh, and then Thursday night, I'm going to meet this Metro Counselor Rosenthal at his request. Think he wants to find out where, where we're at, where I'm at, with some of the things Metro's working on, including I know he wants to ask about SHS. So if you have any, any things you want to put in my ear, give the, give those to me at some point. Not, not now, but on the Friday, there's a PSCC meeting.
Great. Thank you.
You want to go or you want me?
Go ahead.
One, two. Okay, Chair. Yes, we'll behave. I'll go next. Commissioner Willie, I'll give you more time. For in terms of SHS, I did actually have a, a conversation with Garrett Rosenthal around what's happening with SHS and, and then the supportive housing service, Metro's ordinance, the emergency ordinance. And it's my understanding that that's off the table now and considering the action that Multnomah County took. So that was a good conversation to sort of debrief on what they've been doing and, and then to sort of update him on where we are as a county. In terms of the, the AlTura apartment, I really enjoyed attending the Chair, you spoke and said great words, and Mayor Beatty spoke and said great words, as well as Molly Rogers, our staff, housing directors, as well as many other speakers. And one of the speaker that really resonated with me was the tenant. There was a tenant that lived there and brought her daughters and sort of shared what this means for her life. These are seventy-five affordable housing units that came into the South Cooper Mountain neighborhood in Beaverton. And it just sort of reminded me of my own Coming to America story and how we got an affordable housing apartment ourselves and what that meant for us and the excitement because we got to go to a really a great high school as well. And the mom shared how her daughters are really looking forward to going to one of the best schools, one of the newest schools in Beaverton is right across those apartments. So it was just a really a good, good full circle moment, sort of, for me to hear that mom shared and what it means for her life. So that was really kudos to everyone that played a role. I think we're making a difference. Affordable housing. You know, it's, it's an answer. And then eventually homeownership. So I look forward to that mom and others in the units owning their own homes one day, and then the county helping them, you know, facilitate that process. The other big announcement, and this is something I called for you, Erin Doyle, earlier. I got a call from Senator Jeff Merkley earlier to sort of debrief what's happening in Washington DC and talk about the federal administration and what's happening. And one of the thing that the Senator let me know is that the FY 2025 Community Initiative project that we requested, it's not moving forward because the, the continuous resolution that was passed to the Senate. The, the Senator held the line on that and voted no, but obviously his vote no was not enough and that there were enough senators that cited the other side, and that has been passed. And that that one project that he's referenced was about the Woodland Hearth Affordable Housing Development project. That was a three million request that the county requested to the Senator. So that's not moving forward. Erin, this is what I called for you earlier, is that the Senator recommended that you connect with Mitra, that we connect with Mitra to, to figure out how we're going to prioritize the FY 25 request in conjunction with the FY 2026 request. So.
Thank you for catching up with the work that's already underway.
I'm, I'm not sure what you mean underway.
We were already on track for if the Senate took the action that they did, what would need to happen. So staff is already engaged with the federal legislative delegation staff on these projects that are no longer moving forward as reflected in the GRMO.
That's great. The, the I think that the three projects that I advocated in DC were different than what was spelled off. So we have to catch up with.
No, those, the ones you advocated for is the new list, not the prior list.
Commissioner Willie and I went to DC last year to advocate that. That's one of the projects. Sorry. So I think, I think that that's it. But other than that, there's a lot happening in the federal level and the Senator was optimistic that he's going to continue to fight for Oregon way and Oregon rights and continue to hold the line. And with that, I donate my seventeen seconds to Commissioner Willie.
Commissioner Willie, what's up?
Thank you. Well, last week I had, I had to check in with Representative Plain, and we just had she'd given me twenty-five minutes. I took fifteen minutes and told her to go get lunch with the other ten because it was more lunch hour. But probably the most interesting conversation was the transportation bill and, and all the various little things that are going on with the time tax and with everything else. And I was just encouraging her to let's bundle all these things together and let's not death by a thousand cuts on a transportation bill. So she's definitely in agreement with that. Friday night, I went to an event that is actually the Chaplain's Dinner. They have a annual event that is a fundraiser and and got updated on what our chaplains in Washington County do for our fire and police service every year. And it's pretty amazing. I really like going to that event. It's very informational. I've been talking to Forest Grove Commissioner Brian Schimmel, who is, of course, very engaged in some of the things that we are doing in Forest Grove. So it's always good to hear from him, and we will continue that conversation. Went to the employee swearing in at the sheriff's office yesterday with Jason, and that's. and that's always also a very cool event. It's fun to see the next generation coming in, and as they move through the process, it's good to have that. Was with the Chair yesterday on the Chair-Mayor's meeting, talked about library levy polling results. And he said, "You're doing a great job." I hope you're listening, you're doing a great job on providing information for them. And the Mayors continue to ask questions, and I think they'll continue to, we'll get more questions from them. So, I'm happy that you're able to provide all that information to them. Last night was the Forest Grove State of the City. I went with the Chair, and we were both there in that event, very, very well-attended and exciting event. They had a mariachi band that was homegrown after, after the State of the City. They had their city council meeting, and I presented it to say that, at that meeting, just bringing them an update on what we're doing here at Washington County and some of the issues that we have. But that mariachi band is homegrown, and I missed that in the introduction, the first part of it. But yeah, Dale was there too, and it was very cool. That was a very good presentation, and the Mayor did a great job. This is the first time that she's gone solo. Always, they've done a tag team with Cornelius, but this year, they're doing individual State of the Cities, and so that was, she did a great job. So, let's.
The community really showed up.
They really, they very much did show up. So, unfortunately, I can't go to that Just Compassion Grand Opening tomorrow, Jason. So, I have a doctor's appointment tomorrow morning, and I am attending the Portland Metro Chamber event. That is Thursday morning. I just signed up for that, the Future of Regional Homelessness Services. So, that was specific request that the Portland Metro Chamber is inviting those of us who are sitting at the table.
Metro's have invited us to sit at their table.
That's true. They have two tables.
Chair, are you attending that too?
Yeah, everyone from the President's Work Group was invited.
Yeah, so, so I think, yeah, that's all I got.
Great, thank you. Thank you for mentioning the Forest Grove State of the City. I really liked the format. The Mayor gave broad comments and tied the string through all the topics, and then each counselor had a video of highlighting a different area. I thought it was very well-done and something we might consider for our State of the County, which is due later this summer. This past Thursday night, I had the PAB meeting, the Policy Advisory Board, and they advanced their recommendations for the CDBG home and ESG project funding, and this will be coming before us in the near future. This week, as, as highlighted here already, the Just Compassion Access Center/Day Center is opening, and it's the grand opening. Significant amount of SHS capital money went into that, as well as the ongoing operational dollars. But I also modified the talking points to highlight the $655,000 of CDBG funding that was used to acquire the land. Coming up, to put this on your radar, Wednesday, April 3rd, Plumbet Gardens will be having their grand opening. So, hopefully, you'll be able to make it to that one, Jason. That has $1.2 million of home funds. And then, as Commissioner Willie mentioned, the PMC SHS.
I have that on my calendar night party.
Yeah, terrific. Great, great. So, I'm really excited about our Budget Committee meeting tonight, starting our committees. I need to pluralize that. It starts our shared journey together. And we've got the meeting tonight, then the meeting on April 14th. The, what is that one called?
April 14th.
Yeah, it's the onboarding.
Orientation.
Orientation! I knew it began with an O. I just, Oregon just wasn't the right word. Pam will be proud of me, won't she? So, that's it for me today. So, leadership communication.
Good afternoon, Board, and thank you for allowing me, Chair, to be a bit tardy today. I was.
I had a permission slip.
I did.
I noted.
As Jerry was doing this, I was meeting with Darren Atterberry, who is the CEO, President of Strategic Government Resources and the Alliance for Innovation, and they lead training and development for city and county managers on strategic foresight. And so, he's having focus group conversations with individuals across the US during these unprecedented times. What are the needs that managers have, and they'll be evolving their training and development program? So, apologize, I was a bit late to your meeting today. On Thursday, March 20th, the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission, also known the acronym CJC, will hold its spring in-person meeting here. They rotate across the state for their meetings. The Public Safety and Justice Departments, in partnership with Presiding Judge Rebecca Guptill, will host a short roundtable discussion to highlight county programming made possible by the CJC grants. The CJC Commission will go on a tour of our Community Correction Center and then hear a presentation on deflection and treatment court programs before having their business meetings. So, it's a great opportunity to show those state funds in action here in Washington County. Bunny Hayes Animal Shelter, due to staff capacity and with a focus on priority of caring for animals and to be more efficient with field coverage, with a five, with a five-day full operation schedule, Animal Services will be closing the office to the public on Saturdays in approximately 30 days. If you're scratching your head, why Saturdays? This doesn't make sense. I did too, and I asked that question. Staff actually used a data-driven approach and really analyzed when individuals are coming to pick up their pets. And guess what? You don't wait till Saturday. If you lost a pet, you're going to pick it up as soon as possible. So, if there is emergency or animal needs, there is the opportunity to still pick up a pet on Saturday. It's just that the building will be closed to members of the public. Salary Commission, as your Board is aware, per the Charter, the Salary Commission meets, the Independent Salary Commission meets every two years to review the Board's salaries. In my experience, since this body has been created, it is very challenging to find Commission members who have the capacity to, to volunteer their time for this effort because it really is individuals who do have expertise with HR and setting class and comp. Staff have secured a facilitator to manage this year's Commission process and are diligently reaching out to Washington County residents that may find participation or find interest in this process. We are still short three people. So, if you have any suggestions on entities for us to contact, any HR professionals within your network, please relay that information to hand over so that we can get this Commission seated. We do need to make sure that we have as close to a full Commission before we do seat the Commission and before they do their work. I have not, in my to-do, and it just keeps getting pushed out, is to send up your Board an update on the city manager, special district manager, CEO, executive director budget meeting that I held last week. This is the similar slide deck to what you will hear this evening. If your Board is aware, at this point, we share the same information with the multiple audiences that we meet with. There were good questions within the room. Many organizations from local governments are facing similar challenges as we are with their budget, and our community-based organizations are a bit uncertain of what some of their various funding sources may be. So, it was good dialogue, good conversation. Many who were unable to attend have been able to reach out directly for conversations after that, after that meeting as well. On Thursday, I will be traveling to Connecticut for ICMA Executive Board Meeting. During our in-person Board Meeting, we will be discussing local governments' approach, given federal orders and also impacts local governments are seeing, specifically around language that local governments are using, climate and equity. And how do we provide advice for ICMA members, which also helps us as Washington County, determine how do we, how do we look at the federal orders, what the impacts on us could be? How do we evolve the language that we're using to ensure that we continue to receive and are eligible for the needed federal funds and federal grants? Then, next week, during spring break, I will be taking the week off for a staycation with my family. And that concludes my update.
Great, thanks, Anya.
Courtney.
Good afternoon, Chair Harrington Commissioners. Thank you for mentioning earlier, Chair, the completion, the closing of the transaction for the transitional housing. Obviously, as your Board knows, that's going to bring up to 90 beds into our system, and the property is strategically located next to the Elum Young Centers for Addictions and Treatment and Triage. And so, while that's a huge win, did I say it wrong?
Wait, it's the Beaverton one, not the Hillsborough one.
Oh, I sent you an email. Sorry, thank you for the correction, Chair. But still, it's really important property to add into our system and a huge win for the community. But I also just wanted to take a moment, since you raised it, to really congratulate staff because it was a huge lift by Housing and County Council to get that deal closed in time. And so, I wanted to congratulate staff as well for their hard work and acknowledge that hard work. The other thing I wanted to mention was last Wednesday, Facilities, Real Estate, Estate and Planning held an auction of surplus properties that your Board declared surplus. 10 properties were offered for sale and four were sold for just over $50,000. Three of those properties that we accepted offers on were, did come into our portfolio as tax foreclosure. So, as your Board is well-aware by now, these properties will be subject, those excess proceeds may be subject to future claims under the tenipend, holding out of the Supreme Court. So, for the first time, we're segregating those proceeds so that we have them separated in case we get those claims in the future. It'll hold them until the, what we understand to be the current statute of limitations runs before we then transfer them as we, those funds as we normally would.
The auction price is considered the market price?
Actually, we set, Commissioner, we set, by statute, we set the price 70% of the certified tax roll value, so.
It got bid up from.
Yes, yeah, and it's, I wasn't able to attend, but I've definitely been at auctions where some properties are very, very popular and go over the certified tax roll value. So, I'm not sure what happened today or on Wednesday in that regard. I also just wanted to note, the properties that were offered at public auction but weren't sold, will, we, staff will be looking to dispose of those properties, including by private sell. And I know that they've already received interest in several properties. So, we receive offers as what we call private sell, just directly, and those offers will be considered, and any that are recommended for acceptance will be brought to your Board at future time to consider. The last thing, as Ms. Angie noted, it is spring break. We do have several staff who are taking some time off. So, look for communication from me next, early next week about who will be covering all of your legal needs, should you have any next week, while staff are in and out. That's it for me.
Thank you. Diane, Clean Water Services.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, and good afternoon, Board of Clean Water Services. I wanted to highlight that you have two documents under our leadership announcement today. The first one is an overview of our federal funding that CWS is anticipating. Our current federal grant, our Build America Bonds, and several other areas that we're watching as it relates to municipal bonding and potential impacts of tariffs. The second item is our investment report, Q1 and Q2. So, the good news is Clean Water Services is on track, and our average portfolio remains at AAA. Those are those two reports. And then, this evening, you have our CWS Audit Committee bylaws. We're currently recruiting for members for that committee, and we'll be back before your Board on April 15 to take a look at the applicants and to make recommendations.
Great. Thank you very much. And with that, we're going to transition to our executive sessions. The first one is with Clean Water Services. I'd ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session for Clean Water Services pursuant to ORS 192.660 sub 2 sub H for the purposes of discussing potential litigation.
Madam Chair, there was the additional letter from Erin Doyle added to the, from last night's email.
Yes, thank you. I forgot about that.
Good afternoon, Board, and thank you, Clark Moss. For your consideration, I provided a letter to your Board to review, yes, late yesterday evening, related to the ordinance that had been a first-time heard by the Metro Council to allow Metro authority to dispense with their administrative carry-forward dollars related to SHS. This letter, per the direction I have received from the Board, was to request them to take some sort of action. We're not clear on what action they can take to rescind so it cannot just pop up onto their agenda as a second reading with no less than three days' notice. So, I would like direction from your Board about if this letter is appropriate and ready to send.
I, I read the letter. I asked Erin to pull the letter together. They've set a precedent here by filing the ordinance. It, I think, ventures away from partner space and very much into political space, and that's why I think they need to take formal action to pull it back versus just say, well, you know, unless we.
Fly in the wind.
Right, right.
Or just, six weeks from now, all of a sudden, it pops up, somebody pays attention, and it moves. So, yeah, that was good. So, I'm good with the letter.
I agree.
Yep.
Okay.
We'll get it finalized and share it back out as finalized.
Terrific, thank you. Thanks for reminding me. So, now, do we have a motion?
A move.
There are two Clean Water Services letters.
Yeah, she already spoke those letters. Those are information. As she already addressed. Motion? Is there? Okay, all those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you. Any opposed, the motion carries unanimously. We're hereby in executive session. Hello, Brad. I need to leave the room.